I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's Tuesday, June 26, 2018, and this is a Prescott City Council voting meeting. Mayor Protem, do you have introductions or announcements?
Actually, we have some announcements, though. You guys get your calendars out because there's a lot happening in Prescott. As all of us are aware, Saturday, June 30 marks the fifth year since the Granite Mountain inter-agency hotshot crew offered their lives while combating the yarnail fire. As part of the ongoing and annual remembrance, there are a number of activities that are happening this weekend. On Friday at noon, there will be the grand opening and ribbon cutting of the Granite Mountain inter-agency hotshot crew learning and tribute center. That's Friday at noon. The center is located at the Great Gateway Mall in the old Foot Locker building, so we'd love to have you all there. A number of items will be on permanent display beginning Friday. On Saturday, June 30, there will be a private invite by invitation only for the families of the invitation from the Yavapai Firefighters Association. This offers the families of the crew along with affiliates and those closest to share stories while maintaining the efforts to heal. And of course, we have our parade on Saturday at 9:00 a.m. Love to see everybody there. Saturday, June 30, beginning at 4:20, a community remembrance is planned at the stage at the south end of Monizuma Street and the intersection of Goodwin. Community members and visitors are welcome to attend. Following brief comments by the fire chief, Mayor Mangarelli will be there and will speak, and the names of the 19 fallen will be read, and bales will be rung. Finally, to lighten things up a little bit, the annual fire hose cart races will take place on Sunday, July 1, along Cortez on the east side of the Courthouse Plaza at 9:00 a.m. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And of course, we have a rodeo that we'll talk about here in just a little bit in proclamation. So, thank you.
We always have a rodeo.
You mean here in council?
Yes.
Exactly. All right, we're going to have an invocation by Pastor Ron Merrill with Heights Church, and then pledge of allegiance led by Councilwoman Scholl.
Awesome. Let's pray. Gracious heavenly Father, I thank you so much for loving us as much as you do. We thank you for providing us with these great leaders in this phenomenal community. Lord, our hearts still hurt over the 19 that gave the ultimate sacrifice five years ago. We ask that this weekend would just be a continued time of healing and comfort from the family and the friends and our community to that end. Lord, take the opportunities that we've got as the rodeo is right here with us again, Lord, to just bless our community. Thank you so much for providing that here for us. Just ask that you give an abundance of grace and wisdom to the discussions that take place today. We love you so much, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, without borders, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Merrill. We have a proclamation for the world's oldest rodeo.
If you're wearing a hat or a red shirt, well, there it is.
Come on down.
J.C. didn't get the memo either. You're supposed to wear a red shirt today.
Lizelle can't follow the direction.
Oh, Lizelle?
Yeah, the other day, the whole board was white shirts, and he showed up with the red.
All right, we're going to do a proclamation here. We're awfully proud of our rodeo and all that you guys do, so we'll read this proclamation here. Whereas Prescott Frontier Days Incorporated has presented the world's oldest rodeo during the July 4 celebration annually since 1888, and whereas the world's oldest rodeo is celebrating its 131st year, and whereas Prescott's rodeo is led by 1981 bareback world champion, five-time Prescott champion, and pro rodeo Hall of Fame inductee J.C. Trejo, and whereas Arizona's second-largest parade, the Prescott Frontier Days Rodeo Parade entertains thousands each year during rodeo week, and whereas the rodeo is a collaborative effort that instills civic pride and supports our western heritage cowboy culture and values, and whereas the world's oldest rodeo financially benefits businesses and citizens of Prescott as well as those of surrounding communities, now therefore I, Greg L. Mangarelli, Mayor of the city of Prescott, do hereby proclaim June 28 to July 4, 2018, as World's Oldest Rodeo Week, and encourage our citizens and guests to enjoy and support the world's oldest rodeo. Thank you. J.C.'s going to say a little something, or Chris, or somebody, or both of them, I don't know.
Well, it's always great. You know, I grew up right here in Prescott. I've never known the Fourth of July without a rodeo, but I am getting up there. I had a kid tell me the other day, he says, "So, the world's oldest rodeo and the world's oldest cowboy?" And he looked at me, you know. We've got a great rodeo, and we're really looking forward to this great rodeo. We've got the world's champions. We've got every top cowboy, and of course, in the country. We've got great stock this year, and we've got an unbelievable Board of Directors guiding us through this thing. And our main thing is we've got some really, and a lot of volunteers that make this rodeo happy. Thank you.
Picture, and we're out.
Oh, okay.
You got us, John?
I sure do. Daryl's got one, too, there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys. We'll see you out there tomorrow night.
Thank you, sir. You bet.
All right. Thanks, Mary Ann.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Orr?
Here.
Councilman Blair?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Good?
Here.
Councilman Lamerson?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Scholl?
Here.
Councilman Sishka?
Last but not least, here.
All are present.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to consent agenda. Any members of the council want to pull anything off consent? Hearing none. Entertain a motion?
Mayor, move to recommend approval of items 7A through 7F.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's move on to ordinances. Consent, item 8A.
Adopt ordinance number 2018-1618 authorizing the purchase of real property from Wiseheart Hopped Trust for city right-of-way and utility purposes, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said purchase.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 2018-1618.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Let's move on to item 9A.
Mayor and council, this is a public hearing in consideration for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license and application from Louis Basile Jr., Wildflower located at 3201 East State Highway 69. The application has been determined to be in compliance with the city requirements and being recommended for approval. The application fee has been paid, and it's been posted at the site for 20 days. No public comments have been received.
Okay, hear a motion?
May I move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
May I move to approve recommendation for a liquor license number 10853 for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license at the Wildflower Bread Company, location 3201 East State Highway 69.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Okay, let's move on to the next item.
The next item is a public hearing in consideration for a liquor license application for a Series 6 bar liquor license for Rickety Cricket Brewing located at 214 South Monizuma Street located in the entertainment district. The application has been determined to be in compliance with the city requirements and being recommended for approval. The application fee has been paid, and it has been posted at the location for 20 days. No public comments have been received, and I believe the applicant is available for questions.
Yes, Terry's here. I had the opportunity to meet him before the meeting, thank him for doing business here. Any questions for Terry while he's here?
Just a quick comment, good beer. It's very good. I tasted it at the festival. Very nice.
So where do you make your beer?
My beer is made in Kingman, Arizona. I'm a native to Arizona. And Mayor Mangarelli and ladies and gentlemen of the council, I thank you for allowing me to come in and do business in town, and I promise I'll withhold the most professional business standards as being a retired Arizona State Trooper. I hold people responsible for their actions and would hope that we can bring some more people downtown to drink some craft brew.
Awesome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I have one more question for you. Are you going to have entertainment on the back porch?
Yes, sir, we will. We're more of a family-friendly environment down there. What I kind of haven't noticed on that end of the street is a lot of children and whatnot coming down. I think true to passion with their Prescott bringing is that I want to see children back there eating my pizzas. I'm a certified pizza chef. I just recently ranked second in the world in my pizzas, and I want to see families in there enjoying classic rock bands and stuff that are going to bring a good crowd in there in a family-friendly orientation.
Remind me again when you're opening, you said you have a soft opening coming up?
Yes, sir, we have a soft opening. We're doing reservation dinner. We did our first one, first trial run yesterday, so tonight we have a reservation-only dinner, so we have 25 seedings tonight, 25 tomorrow. Then we're going to cease food and just help push patrons downtown into the building, drink some beer and some spirits, listen to some bands, so we have five bands booked for the weekend. And I don't want to get a bad name in town for bad service on the busiest weekend, so we're just not going to serve food this weekend.
Yeah, that's good. Well, thank you. Any other questions? Thanks, Terry.
Good luck.
Thank you for your time.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0. Mayor, I move to approve recommendation for liquor license application number 06130024 for an interim permit of person and location transfer Series 6 bar liquor license for Rickety Cricket Brewing located at 214 South Monizuma Street.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's move on to the next item.
Mayor and council, we have one special event on the agenda today for a Series 15 application for the Coalition for Compassion and Justice. The event is Action Meets Compassion. It will be at 150 South Monizuma Street, and it will be on July 13 from 5 to 9.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I move to forward special event liquor license application 9B1 to the Arizona State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval. Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's move on to regular agenda. Item 10A, please.
Adopt resolution number 2018-1645 authorizing the city of Prescott to enter into amendment number one to Safe Route to School near governmental agreement with the state of Arizona through its Department of Transportation, city contract number 2013-210 specifying updated provisions of the IGA and authorizing the mayor and staff to take any and all steps necessary to accomplish the above.
That was a mouthful. Yeah, so this is related to the Safe Route to School grants that the city was awarded back in '08 and '09 incredibly. We're finally getting to the point where we're about ready to go to construction, and we've been under design for quite some time, and so now we are coming back before you to amend the IGA that we originally signed with ADOT back in '13. Because we have the Stage 5, the 100% plans are now done, we have the new costs, and we have updated funding. Originally, the funding was awarded as part of the Safety Lou grant. That was a federal program. That's like two federal programs back because it was so long ago. I think MAP 21 came, and then now we're kind of under a different one. But we originally were awarded, like I said, $285,000. In that time, many things changed in the city of Prescott. We actually had a couple schools close. Some of our schools and things have changed, and so we originally won four grants. We've done one already. We're underway right now at Mile High and Mountain Oak School, and then this is the second. But we had one at Miller Valley School, and we had one at Washington School. When those schools closed, we canceled the IGAs with the state. They took back those funds, and then they reallocated those back into some of these projects because obviously, as many of you have read, the amounts have gone up as we've refined the scope and done all these things. So at this point, the amount of the federal funding, I think, has been bumped up to about, well, just, yeah, near $620,000, I think, is the federal-funded portion, and our portion is $90,000. That covers our 5.7% of the design, the construction, and I think they call it a PDA fee, but basically it's some ADOT management fees. These grants are administered and run by ADOT. They hire the on-call designers, they advertise, and they manage the project. We are essentially a stakeholder. At the time, we acted, we were working, when we got the grants, Prescott Alternative Transit was actually the applicant. We were the sponsoring agent, and so this is the end of that process. The improvements that we're going to do are providing sidewalk where it ends on Coronado near Park Avenue. It's going to continue up Park Avenue all the way up to Country Club Drive, and so that will have crosswalks, ADA ramps, new sidewalk, retaining walls. And that was one of the main reasons for the increases in cost was there's some large slopes in there, and the homes, it's an older area, some of the homes are below grade of the street, so there's quite a bit of retaining walls and things like that in there. So that's the extent of the project. It's primarily a large sidewalk project to get people walking in the neighborhood and then essentially to school. The, this project is going to have a second element where we have been, the city is responsible to acquire the right-of-way and the TCEs, and the IGA amended that. There's a section in there that talks about the city will acquire those things. We've been doing that, and we will bring that back on July 10 as an item for the acquisition of the TCEs and some small right-of-way of eight properties. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Good?
Yeah, Ian, I am very familiar with the area of this project. I used to live on Coronado years ago and walked those streets myself, and then a couple years ago, I did a ride-along with the Prescott Police Department, and we had a really bad accident that came flying over the top of Coronado and then crashed into a tree. So having those kids off the roadway and off the shoulders onto safe sidewalks, I think, is very valuable. And I know looking at the original packet, it looked like the cost escalated by 150% over a five-year period, but knowing that some of the dollars now allocated so we can do a larger project on Country Club and include some of the retaining wall requirements on those slope areas there of Coronado should make it a much safer ability for the kids to get down to school. So I support the project 100%. Thank you.
Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you, Mayor. Ian, could you explain to me a little bit, you said we returned the money on the last project, ADOT? Is that a correct statement?
Yeah, so initially, in the two cycles that we went to apply, we won four grants, like I said. We won this one, Mile High, which is still in place, Washington School and Miller Valley. We had agreements in place with them to receive certain amount of funds and then, you know, do the matching stuff for ourselves. I think that came out to somewhere in the range of $500,000. We canceled those IGAs and that basically re-releasing the money back into that Safe Routes to School program, and then they were able to reallocate some of that money, a lot of that money, back to us to make these projects whole.
That makes me feel a little better to understand. During the first cycle, the money was actually very similar to what this was intended to get kids to school safe, and part of that program was they were going to do things to instruct kids how to go to school safely on sidewalks, et cetera, and instead, some of the money was diverted to paint a picture on a side of a school that's now been torn down. I feel like it's a waste of a lot of money. So I just want to make sure that the money we're agreeing to partner with on this isn't going to go waylaid someplace to paint a picture on the side of a wall somewhere.
Yeah, there were two different programs. They were under Safety Lou, but one was for education, and I believe the funds that you're talking about, there was like $40,000-something we used to receive every year, PAT would receive, some local groups in the community, and that money was for education outreach and doing the things you're talking about, and that money might have been involved in some of those things. This is a separate fund for infrastructure improvements only, and so the money that we turned back went back into our project, and then some of it might have been turned back to help make other projects whole in other communities.
So this is for infrastructure, not for pictures?
Infrastructure only, yes.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Ian, thank you for this information, and I think it's important that this is, this program has now gone away, the Safe Routes to School.
Yeah, it's gone.
It's gone, so this will be the last one unless somewhere or another it gets regenerated down the road. So the other is, so this will be run by ADOT, so all of it will be administered by ADOT? Is that correct?
Yes, it will.
So they will do the RFP, and they'll do the contract, and so I guess my only concern is that we work closely with them on communicating. When I look at this picture, I mean, we're going to go through a lot of neighborhoods, that we just communicate with the neighbors?
Yeah, so...
How's that going to happen?
We do have certain responsibilities. Like I said, we have to provide the right-of-way clearances and all the...
So that's the cities, the right-of-way?
And we've been doing that, and the temporary construction easements. So we've been communicating with the property owners that will be directly affected because ADOT's contractor has to be on the properties or take a small portion. We've been following the federal process in doing that, and so we've been, the city has been taking that role and doing that, and like I said, we'll come back in about two weeks to authorize the offers for compensation for the small right-of-way takes that we've been doing. So the city has been taking that and doing all those communications so those residents know what project we're doing, and, you know, we're showing them the plans. And then when we get to construction, you know, similar to Mile High and Mountain Oak, Mountain Oak is under construction right now. They have some onsite stuff going on, but we're a stakeholder, but we're also the decision-maker because any overages on cost beyond this are borne by the city, so they won't authorize any changes through the contract without city's approval. So we, basically, though, the contractor talks to ADOT, ADOT clears it through the city, then they authorize the contractor to make any change or things like that.
And the timeline for start and finish?
Yeah, so they're in a rush. Obviously, work coming on 10 years from the original grant, there's, they have to have this under construction in '19. So they pushed us to move the right-of-way acquisition up two weeks so to meet their fiscal, I think their end of fiscal year is like September 30, October 1. So they want to get this out to bid and underway pretty much immediately.
Well, that's great. It will be a nice addition to the neighborhood, so that's good.
Councilwoman Scholl?
I think this is some serious bang for our buck. I mean, not only will this promote safe routes to school, but that area during Halloween is a madhouse. There's the historic home-walking tour. I mean, people come to that area, my parents live there, just to walk those streets in that neighborhood, so it'll just be safer for everyone, not just the students walking to school.
So Ian, tell me with Washington School, are you still doing a project there?
No, because it basically is no longer a functioning elementary school. It didn't qualify for the, you know, the funds.
Even though they have the preschool there, that's not a qualifier?
Yeah, it's not quite the same, and so the improvements that were needed when it operated as a school were different. It mainly consisted of some connections over to the library, and honestly, times gone by, a lot of the things that we had in some of those projects, we've just been doing naturally through our own, through your actions on like the sidewalk program. Park Avenue, initially, the scope included some stuff down by Park Avenue, but we did those improvements. The city did it. So that allowed us to move the funds and, you know, get a little further up Country Club, all the way to Country Club Drive, but we just kept trucking along, and so we'll seamlessly add this in, but we're not really missing big improvements in those areas because they only needed them because of the schools.
Yep. Other questions or comments from the council? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
May I move to...
Go ahead. Go ahead, Billy.
Mayor, move to adopt resolution number 2018-1645.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Let's move on to item 10B, please.
Award of City Contract to Capital Improvements LLC for the Robinson Drive Reconstruction Project, and Amendment of City Contract with Shepherd West Nitzer Incorporated for Post-Design Services.
Craig's going to jump up there.
I'm going to jump up here because I've got Steve working on another thing, and we've got to get him here as well. Would you mind running to the center and get Steve Oars?
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Craig Dotseth, Public Works. So this item is for the reconstruction of Robinson Drive, which includes full water, sewer, pavement, curb and gutter, sidewalks and drainage improvements on Robinson Drive from essentially Gurley Highway 69 all the way up to the county line of the city limits. So with that, this project originally, on the design, included items that we addressed under rightsizing. So we went back to the design on this project and ultimately reduced the scope of the drainage associated with the project and rightsized it in order to reduce the expense that was included onto those drainage improvements. The project is set up to be done in phases, so the initial phase from Gurley up into the Stetson area has a timeframe to be completed within like 45 days in order to ultimately reduce the impact on the neighborhoods with the construction. So there'll be the first phase right in there in order to allow people to get out of the neighborhood. Then there's a second phase that will go from there up to Flato, and then the third phase will be from Flato above there. There's also a break planned or included into the construction anticipating that we're going to get a real winter this year, we're hoping, but that break will be in the holiday season between Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's, and when we normally have some of the toughest winter weather and conditions in there, also to reduce the impact on the neighborhood during the holiday season.
I think he's looking to see if you're coming up, Steve.
And maybe with that, we have it primarily covered. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Anyway, so if you have any questions, then what I don't have, and Steve will back me up maybe.
Yeah, I think this has been probably much anticipated. Councilman Blair?
Just what is the 119,344 post-design services? Is that as-built when it's done, or is that for inspection?
That is, Steve Oars, Public Works. Councilman Blair, that, those costs are for as-built during, after construction, and also for the engineer of record to observe during construction enough to be able to sign off at the end saying it was as-built per his plans.
And the other question would be is, why isn't that amount in the original contract? Why is it a separate amount?
The original contract, good question. The original contract was let several years ago. The project has grown, shrunk, grown, not quite to its original size or second size or third size. It's been around a while, so the final product, we have a clean slate. We know what the engineer needs to do, they know what they need to do, so this is the cost to do that.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilman Sishka?
Thank you. A couple of questions. Craig, you mentioned rightsizing on the drainage. What kind of changes were made?
There was additional piping included on the drainage that continued further south up Robinson Drive, which added, we had a number, yeah, it was like $190,000 worth of the additional drainage pipe, so we went back to the drawing board, looked at that to see if there was other means to accomplish that, and to what extent that drainage improvement... other means to accomplish that, and to what extent that drainage improvement was, was required. So, with that, we were able to reduce the total footage, and ultimately reduce the project by, by that amount.
Well, congratulations, the citizens of Prescott appreciate that. Second question, at the bottom of Robinson, is it going to be right turn only still?
Want to answer?
Sure. Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Other questions, comments from the council? Entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move to award city contract number two zero one eight dash two three one, and two, to approve amendment number one to the city contract number two zero one five dash zero nine six eight one.
Can we do this together, John?
Yes.
Perfect.
Second.
Motion in second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Let's move on to item ten C. Thank you, Craig and Steve.
Review of Bed Tax Budget and Tourism Advisory Committee Grant FY nineteen allocations.
Mayor and Council, John Heine, Tourism Office. We are here to review the bed tax allocations in the budget for FY twenty nineteen. Just some, a little bit of background and information for you, bed tax collections continue to be very strong, increasing the fund balance above projections this year, as it did in the years past. Additional expenditures that are part of the Recreation Services capital projects that you see in this budget are in keeping with the original bed tax ordinance, and were reviewed and accepted by the Tourism Advisory Committee, so I wanted you to make a note of that, since it's a significant increase showing on your budget there. The revamped TAC grant process went very smoothly this year, there were thirteen successful applicants, we had ten last year. The total of all the awards was adjusted proportionally, slightly downward for each of them, to meet the forty thousand dollar budget limit. Recipients have been notified of the award pending your final approval, and no objections were received, we actually had some comments and compliments on the process and how well it went. I want to recognize, I think Margot Christensen is here, TAC Board Chair, so she oversaw that process, and we think it went very smoothly. Basically, that's what I have to present at this time, there is some information up here, the actual TAC grant allocations are shown right now on the overhead for FY nineteen, you can see how that compares to previous years as well, so happy to entertain questions.
Perfect, thank you, John. Mayor Protem?
Yes, well, John, I'd just like to say it went smoothly because of all the work that you put in on this, and revamping the whole project, and thank you, Margot, and to the Tourism Advisory Committee, so good job, good job.
Councilman Sishka?
Thank you. John, I noticed that the Corvette Car Show went down from five thousand to thirty-five ninety-four, as I remember, there was a big hullabaloo about that last year, so what is our situation going forward?
I think we're in good shape, I actually met with Jerry Jones, who is representative, he was just here today, he told me he couldn't be here today, but he was aware of the process and approved of it. So, he, while he was saddened to see that he's getting less money, we talked a little bit about what this council has talked about, is bringing in new events and new organizations to have an opportunity. So, he was sad that they were, you know, losing that money, but understood the process.
Okay, and you're sure that's all going to happen, because as I remember, Jerry said the same thing last year, and then his partner said, whoa, wait a minute.
If there's, I don't know if there's anybody here for public comment, but...
Yeah, no, but, but I just want to make sure that, that you're good.
Yeah, we, I actually checked in with him twice specifically about it, and again, this appointment that is slightly lower, but if you look at the big picture, we've got more organizations benefiting from it, and he understands that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hullabaloo, I'm, I'm not familiar, but...
Hullabaloo.
Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you, I want to also extend my appreciation to Margot and the entire TAC committee for doing the hard work they do, and Mr. Heine for a lot of the input and advisory capacity that he does, being a downtown merchant who is probably fifty percent dependent on tourism coming to this area, you guys do a great job, and thank you very much.
Councilman Blair?
Well, I guess maybe I just need to be refreshed, I, I'm confused, I thought this was about putting butts in beds and generating lodging and room night stays and those types of things, and when I look at it, and look at Chalk It Up for Prescott and some of the other ones, are we really, is that really what our idea is?
Actually, Steve, I'll help you remember the actual wording on the initiative that went to the voters, was tourism promotion and parks and rec development, and that's sort of the way the money's, in, in a humbled opinion, being looked at here, is what promotes tourists coming to town, and do people come to town from outside of town to see the chalk it up and things like that. So, I, I do think that the TAC went all out to review different things that do indeed generate new programs and new reason for people to come into town, so I'm just sharing that, we, I remember distinctly having this argument...
I get that part, I just...
It wasn't just about filling beds.
I, I, okay, but it goes back to the, what, what the tourism money's really used for, and, and the bottom line is, when I see Highland Games getting nothing, maybe, maybe they didn't apply, I don't know.
They did not apply this year, so I, I can help you fill in the process a little bit, and maybe understand how we got to this number.
Maybe it would be helpful if said did not apply up there, so we would know that, I mean, again, I'm looking at the numbers down below and seeing what, five new, five new items up there, and I can agree with Arizona Wildfire Academy, because they put a lot of people in beds.
They do.
So, I mean, I'm looking at the numbers and the fact that this is what we're supposed to be using it for, is generating tourism dollars and recreation.
Absolutely.
I'm not going to micromanage it, I just have questions about a couple of them, that's all.
Well, just to give an overview of the process and what was changed this year, Mr. Mayor and Council, is we did a scoring process based on a hundred point scale, and so the TAC members looked at four points, and scored them accordingly, each was worth twenty-five points, thereabouts, and part of that was, of course, not only how they, if they put heads in beds, but how they marketed to get people, we talked about the Ninety Miles and marketing to Flagstaff and Phoenix, so that was all taken into account. There were definitely events on this list that had a very low ratio of out of town visitors, and they were scored accordingly, for example, Chalk It Up Prescott got a little less than fifty percent of what they asked for, based on the scoring scale, so the scoring was, was rated accordingly, but at the same time, there's a desire to support these events and help them and assist them to marketing farther away to bring people in in the future, sort of, you know, looking to the future and helping them expand their reach.
And at one time, John, I thought we looked at using some of this money for seed money, but not as a continual subsidy for private industry, et cetera. So, you know, some of these almost appear as though they keep coming back over and over and over, and that needs, that needs to be weaned too, because the money was intended for new things, I mean, it's just like the bicycle race, that was never intended to be a twenty-year subsidy, that was intended to come and set up a program and move on. So, just sharing that with you.
Sure, absolutely, and that's something that with council direction, TAC would be happy to look at that going forward, about some sort of process, you know, for seed money versus, you know, that, that can be reviewed. This is, I think, the most applicants we've ever had, and successful applicants, we hit the budget, so really what, what happened was we had to give them less money than they actually were awarded, because we hit the budget ceiling, so another, another way to do that would be to, you know, like you said, kind of wean some of them off at some point, or increase the budget in the future, but that's going to require council direction.
Councilman Good?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to see a little larger font on our reports.
Okay, we'll work on that, that's a spreadsheet there.
Why is that, Phil?
Why is that? One thing that I noticed on the budget worksheet is the Recreation Development Capital Fund, where fiscal year eighteen was budgeted sixty thousand five hundred, only ten thousand five hundred was spent, and now we're increasing it to two hundred and fifty-six, two hundred and fifty-five thousand. So, that is a huge, huge increase, could you speak to that?
I will certainly give it a try, and if we need some more clarification, we have Joe Baines here, but there's an opportunity here with our, with our growing fund balance, if you look at it year over year, to, you know, to make some improvements that maybe we wouldn't have been able to make in the past. So, I think Joe, City Manager, and myself, we actually brought some of these ideas to TAC, they reviewed it and approved it, so I, Joe could get into the specifics if you'd like of some of the projects, but these are a lot of capital projects and things that we're, we're seizing an opportunity here with the fund balance at this time.
Well, yeah, I'd like to have the public understand...
Sure.
...these large additional expenditures.
Yeah, Councilman Good, off the top of my head, these are capital improvement projects, I think we funded the restrooms that will be budgeted in this next fiscal year for the Centennial Trail, Centennial, yeah, Constellation Trail, I'm sorry, the new restrooms that would go there at the parking lot, those are funded out of bed tax. There is the Economic Impact Benefit Analysis that we're doing for Antelope Hills, that'll be funded out of the tourism money, and there's a couple others in there, that's, that's the increase in, in the amount of money that you see. Yeah, and, and I could get the rest of the information and detail those out, I just don't have them all on the top of my head.
Okay, I just want to make sure that they're publicly known. Yeah, we had, I'm sorry, that's kind of small, Goldwater, this is from our budget presentation, we went over this during the budget workshop, but we had a hundred and forty-nine thousand for the Constellation Trail head improvements, and seventy thousand for design and engineering at Goldwater Lake. And then we also had some tee renovations and some cart path improvements at the golf course. I definitely support that, thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, thank you. John, I'm really pleased, and to TAC, and, and Margot, I'm very pleased that the Wildfire Academy, because they really, as Council Lamerson, or maybe it was Blair, said, they bring in a lot, and it's not really tourism, but it's certainly heads in beds, and what a great job they do, and, and I think this year was a really outstanding year. The other one, my first party in the pines, I went to, and what, that was so much fun. So, I, I know that some of these have been around for a while, but these are successful. I mean, these, these are just, they're filled, these are groups that do a lot for our community, so I understand the idea of weaning them off, but at the same time, you know, if you've got something that's working, let's, let's keep supporting it, so I, I guess I would be careful with the weaning.
Well, you have to, Billy, you have to evaluate, and one, and one of the things that I'll remind you is with Wildland Fire, they not only fill beds on a temporary basis, they're transient occupants, they fill hotels, they fill restaurants, they fill bars, they, but bigger than that, they keep the community safe, you know, and when the Wildland Fire Academy is here, it wears public awareness of our susceptibility to forest fires, we're right in the middle of the woods, so that's a good thing.
I absolutely agree, Councilman, I absolutely agree, and, but I just, just think that these are some really good things that happen, and, and TAC does evaluate, this is quite an evaluation that these groups go through in, in order to get the forty thousand dollars among thirteen groups, so, thank you, John.
Other questions, comments? Entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the transient occupancy tax allocations for fiscal year nineteen.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Let's move on to item ten D, please.
Adopt Resolution number twenty eighteen dash sixteen forty-seven, authorizing the city of Prescott to enter into a development agreement with Creekview Housing LLC, and authorizing the mayor and staff to take any and all steps necessary to accomplish the above.
Mayor and Council, this project originally started with the Community Development Department, and it seemed appropriate to give you a quick update of the situation, and maybe a quick reprise of the history of this project, it's been going on since two thousand and sixteen, when the developers came to us and requested an amendment to the zoning to allow them to use this particular piece of property. It was originally zoned industrial, and we're talking about property immediately next to the McDonald's on Miller Valley Road, the industrial zoning was a carryover from ancient history, all the way back to when the railroad went through. So, they went through the process, they obtained the rezoning from the city council in two thousand and sixteen, and then they came back a year later and obtained both a water service agreement and a site plan approval for their development in seventeen, and at the same time, council provided them a support letter that they used to apply to the state for grant funding that, which ultimately will fund the development of the project. As part of that support, the city agreed to contribute some of, some of its CDBG funding towards infrastructure project as sort of an in-kind that was necessary for their grant application to get them the points necessary to win the grant. However, as we got into that process, it was determined that using federal monies, CDBG monies, applied additional cost to the project which they simply couldn't bear, meeting federal wage requirements for, for the workforce during the construction, meeting certain federal guidelines on the floodplain issues that aren't normally applied to developments like this, all kick in if we use CDBG money. So, last year, there was a big discussion about how to support the project through another means, and as negotiations between the Creekview Apartment, developers, and the Engineering Services and Legal Department ultimately have ended up with a project that could be funded through this development agreement. And with that, I'll turn it over to the city attorney and to Craig Dotseth to answer questions about specifics.
And briefly, I think the, the memo describes the overall intent of the, of the transaction, the city's going to contribute towards utilities, and I'll let Craig kind of get into specifics, if you have questions, plus an additional sort of buried in that, or included in that contribution, there's a fifty-five thousand dollar grant from the utilities, utilities funds, I believe, so it's not general fund, and, and just to reemphasize, this is a HUD project, so it is a, a more affordable or workforce housing type project, seventy-two units, right there on Miller Valley Road. I believe a developer representative is here, if you have any questions for the developer, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, or let Craig kind of address the utilities issue. Yes, briefly.
And then the next piece of the puzzle, then, too, this, this development project fell right into place with a couple capital improvement projects that we had already moving in Public Works. So, the first one was drainage improvements associated with Shimmer Drive and Miller Valley intersection, which was slated being designed to go down across this property. So, that project was kind of slowed to fall into place with this construction, instead of going in ahead of time on a, as a separate project, and then also the Sun Dog Trunk Main Replacement Project was being designed to come around the side of this property, and we were seeking easements from them originally before this development project came about. So, with that, we realigned the alignment of that sewer trunk main to allow that trunk main and that project to directly serve this project, and not have a duplicate system next to this, just in a little different area. So, we started teaming up on that. So, that's where it came into place, where, where we as Public Works continued with the design associated with the sewer trunk main, with the water that we were having to relocate in Miller Valley because of the trunk main project, as well as the, the storm drain, so then coming together, it works, works out well, and then the development agreement speaks to where they're on a little faster timeframe track than we are with the sewer trunk main, then by, through the development agreement, we allow them to construct that, and then we ultimately will pay for what we were building anyway. With that, yeah, we'll all entertain questions.
Councilman Good?
So, are you saying that this fifty-five thousand dollar design grant is kind of offsetting what we would have to pay to acquire the right-of-way?
That's, would be a way to look at it.
And how close do you think that matches? I don't think the right-of-way would be fifty-five thousand.
Well, then, then there's also potential benefits in the means of, if we would have had a single project and we went in and constructed it for the storm, and then we went back in a second time and constructed sewer, there's additional cost by doing two separate projects also, where now it'll be done as one, so we, if we got into the weeds and really looked at every piece, there's, there's several benefits that could add up to that value.
Well, as long as I see that we're getting a, a pretty close match, and we're not really paying for a developer's legitimate cost, then I think I could support it, so are you saying it's pretty close?
Yeah, I think, I think those factors, in looking into the fifty-five thousand dollar number... Yeah, I think those factors in looking into the $55,000 number, the savings to the city are really, the biggest portion is the economy of scale. By having, by doing all the project at once, and then the developer doing it sort of through the private sector process as part of the overall project, if the city had done these Public Works projects separately, we're pretty comfortable that, quite honestly, that the savings are more than $55,000. The reason it's $55,000 is because the grant is taxable, and so it can't be a, quote unquote, can't be a penny more, according to the developer, of what the city's grant should be. And we did the math on it, pardon me. And I think the numbers are actually higher than the 55 in terms of the overall savings to the city.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protem?
Yes, so Craig, this is a great project. I'm very excited. It's so needed right in that area. So, I drive by that quite often, and it's beautiful, lots of trees down by... Can we hold on to some of those trees as this development goes in so that it doesn't all of a sudden look cleared away?
Developer here.
It is really a very nice area.
You bet.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Mark Schumacher, Bethel Development. As George said, this project's been going on a while. I just realized I've had two birthdays since I've been working on it, seriously, 21 months. It was a year ago this Friday that we received the allocation of tax credits from the state of Ohio, or the state of Arizona. And we are this close to starting construction. We were just discussing pulling building permits before the meeting today. Yeah, we're gonna save, we're not crossing the pathway back there or the creek. There's no development going on back there. And that was really one of the reasons why we couldn't use the CDBG money, was because of the floodway associated with the creek. And that just, it made it impossible. To answer Councilman Good's question regarding the dollar amount, I believe the original easement offer to the original owners was like $35,000. So, when you're looking at a difference of $20,000 and potential savings to the city, as was explained, how we're developing this all at once instead of in phases. And quite frankly, private sector can probably do this less expensively than government bidding contract. So...
So, what's your timeline? What are you looking at?
We, as soon as rodeo days are over, we expect to break ground.
Okay. And finish?
12 months.
Good. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments from the council?
Thank you, Mr. Schumacher. I think there's another benefit here. Chief Black could attest that this will clean up that area of our city as well. We've got issues back there, and having this development in there will definitely clean up the neighborhood a little bit, so to speak. So, it's another side benefit. Entertaining motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2018-1647 and approve City Contract Number 2018-243 and 2018-244.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Let's move on to item 10E.
Adopt Resolution Number 2018-1643, adopting a tentative budget, adopting the estimated amounts required to meet the public expenses for the City of Prescott for the fiscal year 2019, authorizing and directing publication of statements and schedules of the tentative budget, together with notice and notice of hearing and said budget and notice of date of final adoption of said budget, and notice of the date of establishment of the expenditure limitation, and notice of the date for fixing a tax levy.
Mayor and council, I'm Lars Johnson, Budget and Tax Manager. Excuse me. And today's the first part of a two-part formal adoption process. The tentative, we adopt first today. And we've had this council budget process to date. Just as a reminder, there's been strategic planning sessions that we went through last fall. Then, we had the workshop in May, along with a mid-year budget report in February. Today, we're adopting the tentative budget. What the tentative budget will do is it sets the cap the council wants to have as their budget for the next year. You can always reduce it upon final adoption, but you cannot exceed that limit. That's in the official budget form that we're about to publish. And as Maureen read, it also includes notifying the public of the public hearing on July 10th for the expenditure limitation for the tax levy and property... Yeah. And then, it's also authorizing us to publish this summary, which I'll show you in a bit. But just as a reminder, here's the final budget that we presented to you, or our proposed budget we presented to you in the workshop. Our operating budget, we're looking at just a .3 increase over last year. And overall, $191,270,765, which is a 1.3% increase over last year. The official budget of the city is presented on these Schedule A through G, which is in the packet. It will be recorded in the minutes as well. But the Schedule A is the only thing that we actually publish in the newspaper, and that will go out. It will be the next two Sundays notifying the public of what our budget will look like. This schedule provides an estimate of what our total finance, total financial resources that we have available, which is the $237 million. And then our budget is $191 million. There also is, if you're interested, if you start in the very top row, you'll see what our estimated actual expenditures are for FY '18. So, our budget was $188 million, and we're estimating to spend $158. Also, we're estimating on this sheet what our fund balances are at the beginning of the year, July 1st. So, after the tentative budget adoption today, there's two additional meetings we go through. On July 10th, there's a public hearing for the tax levy and expenditure limitation. Then we'll adopt the final budget. And then on the 24th of July, that's when we'll adopt the property tax levy. So, with that, I'll answer any questions if you have.
Mayor Protem?
Lars, can you go back to the sheet that showed the PSPRS?
Sure.
I think it's really important that we talk to our public about what we're doing on this. So, could you emphasize that?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So, the normal cost of PSPRS is included in the operating budget line. You also see three additional lines here that we've separated out. The unfunded annual required contribution, it's 6.9 million next year. We're funding that out of the general fund. And then, in addition, the tax that the citizens passed, the .75%, we expect to generate $12 million. That will be an additional contribution over and above our annual required contribution.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Other questions, comments from the council?
I have one for Lars. And what, and I know you don't know because you haven't got the actuaries back. Between now and that time in the future, what's our projected total number that we've contributed? When you add that next, about 20 million you were just talking, what have we, what have we just dumped up?
Twenty last year.
Right?
Yeah. So, I guess I could put this up.
Yeah, but I like to hear it publicly
Yes.
because we're accused of not putting any money in, and that's not true.
Yeah, let me get it a little bigger. Okay, sorry. So, this is what FY '18 projected payments. It's 25.3 million. Next year, an additional 20 million. That's including our annual required contribution. But if you add in those two additional payments, then you're looking at 29 million of additional payments in two years.
29 million over the top of ARC.
Right.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Lars.
Councilman Good.
When do we expect to get an actual report from PSPRS to show what our unfunded liability is? Is that quarterly, semi-annually, what?
They do it once a year. They do an annual actuary for all 256 different agencies.
Right.
It takes about six months for them to get that together. So, we usually get it in December, sometimes in January. But hopefully, we'll get it in December this year.
Yeah, it's unfortunate we can't monitor our progress a little more often than once a year. But I guess that's beyond our...
Talk to your legislative friends about that, yeah.
I do want to say that I'm pretty pleased with the work that the department has done to be able to fund some of our critical improvements, especially the airport. We're getting a lot more building projects completed, so that floating $34 million, it seemed to always be left over because we didn't get these projects that were approved and funded actually built. That seems to be coming down. So, when we can get things done, completed, built, and still only have a approximately 1% plus increase in our total city budget, that's pretty, pretty good. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Sorry, Matt, I should make one more comment, and it's really to Michael Lamar and his department heads. And just appreciate that you held the line. And that's why we've been able to do more toward PSPRS. So, I know there's a lot of need out there, and so thank you for that leadership to all of your department heads and to you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and I will pass that on to the department heads as well.
Other questions or comments from the council? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I don't have it.
Anybody?
All right, I'll do it. You know, it's pretty hard to sit here and spend almost 200 million bucks on behalf of people, isn't it? Okay. But I know how to do it. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2018-1643.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
I have a quote from Daryl Willis, who was, at the time, the division chief of the Prescott Fire Department and the father of the Grand Mountain Hotshots in the aftermath of the Yarnell tragedy. This quote, "I would have followed them blindfolded into the place where they were at. This crew was the real deal. In my words, right and tight." This meaning is adjourned.